It wasn't until Colonel Pennell noticed and he helped me find the right program. And it helped us. I don't believe that it'll wreck your career like I did in the beginning. And I'm starting to see it at the higher levels of command, they're understanding, wow, we owe these guys a chance to heal. So, don't be afraid to come forward if you have trouble.
Thank you. Georgie and I pitched in, we got a range for you.
The majority of the...
Now, one condition, you leave them alone for the whole board meeting. In order to do your stuff, you have to stand up at your chair.
Fair.
But they all gotta stay.
Is this like a Jenga game?
You think they'll do it?
Yeah, okay. Thank you so much, thank you.
They won't let you down. So, we're gonna put a box out there for you. And that, so... We're gonna have someone take a picture of both of us. By the way, everyone's got a bowl of cereal tonight too. Who's got a camera? Tom? Come here.
You got one out of my way. You wanna talk to your wife, go talk.
Where's my agenda by you? I told you, you want some marketing? We're getting your marketing. Tom, you in your paper? This be in your paper?
Well, I don't know this particular...
Will this be in the paper, Tom?
This event?
Yes, there you go.
I don't know which particular picture because the meeting's not started yet, so... Good, we got Jeff Ramsey eating in the background. Thank you guys very much.
That's right.
Hang on, hang on, one more. Everyone, you got your bowl of cereal, stand up. Come on, stand up with your bowl of cereal. Come here, Joe. Come here. And Joe has a bowl of cereal.
We like go cheers or something. No, you're fine.
Okay, Joe, turn around.
It's our silver spoon.
Everyone, scoot down a little bit.
What do I do?
Scoot down. Scoot down. No, no, this is actually a sugar pop.
It's a sugar pop.
Kobe's eating something. Ready?
You were in front of the... You have a better bowl than we do.
All right, ready? I'm a going boy.
Damn, man. You missed a show, damn right.
Thank you.
All right. There we go. If I'm in your way.
By the way, Tom's got to...
Yours is an easy problem.
Start here in just a second. Start here in just a second. I like when Joe said, thinking about eating bran flakes. At your age, I thought you'd have bran flakes in the thing. Where's the milk? Everyone likes sugar pops. Okay. With that said, we'll say, we call the village board meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Bush?
Here.
Trustee Frankie?
Here.
Trustee Jerash?
Here.
Trustee Miller?
Here.
Trustee Prochnow?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Present.
Okay, all board members are present tonight. Anyone watch out, he sees all the cereal in front of Trustee Bush. We donated 300 boxes to the Battle Against Roti Medals for the cereal that you're raising for the food pantry.
Yep.
The township food pantry.
Township food pantry, yes.
So, that's why we did all this today. So, it's a great contest, really, too, and we're excited about that. Okay, we move on now to the... You can sit down now, we've seen...
I'm gonna stand for the invocation.
Not yet, not really yet. Now, will, please rise for the invocation. We have, we have Father Adajah. Did I say Adajah, am I right?
That's fine, yeah.
Okay, thank you. From Old Queen Rose and our blessed sacrament, we'll do that first and we'll do the plegiologies afterwards. So, Father?
Thank you.
Please.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Lord, make us instruments of your peace. Where uncivil words prevail, show us to model love. Help us remember the God-given dignity of all and invite others to do the same. Show us how to build bridges and not walls, and see first what unites us rather than how we diverge. Let us seek to understand before asking to be understood. Give us a listening heart filled with compassion and empathy. Let us be clear in sharing our own positions and respectful and civil in describing those of others. Let us never tolerate hateful ideas. May we invite all to charity and love. Help us to imitate your compassion and mercy. Make us instruments of your peace. We make our prayers to Christ our Lord. Amen.
Flags to my right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Father, hang on a second.
Can you see him?
Yeah. Again, Father, thank you, welcome. Your first time here, the invocation, we welcome you here. And what we do is, we give out chocolates that actually have the village logo on there.
I can't eat them.
Pardon?
Can I still eat the logo?
Oh, yes, you definitely eat the logo. Eat the whole thing. And for people like me that have had heart surgery, it's healthy chocolate, it's not milk chocolate. So, that is good, so this is for you.
Thank you.
I thank you again. Tell Father Dan I says hi. I'm glad to have you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you again, Father. Take care. Okay, now, one little housekeeping rule. The bowls are Mrs. Johnson's. And if I don't collect them all tonight to go home with them, I will be shot because she said if I don't get my bowls back, I mean, I go out and buy all new plates. I said, we'll get them back. So, when you're done with them tonight, make sure to...
Can I just add something?
Kobe's having a field day over there. Look at it.
Could you hold your bowl up? Now, he's the mayor. Look at all our bowls.
Yeah.
This shows you how it works out.
I'm still waiting to see what the problem is. I thought that's... I don't understand. Anyways, we now move on to approval of the minutes of September 24th, 2024.
I move that we approve the minutes of September 24th, 2024, as presented and dispensed with the reading.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
So, I have a motion by Trustee Prochnow, second by Coach Jerash. Any questions, comments, concerns? If not, all favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That's where I can show you that's approval. Young Matthew here, just sent over a thing about the cereals and all that stuff, explains my high cholesterol.
It's a lot of sugar.
That could be. Except, my good doctor gave me the best ever. Don't diet, said, take the pill and eat what you want.
I don't know that he knows that you're eating that much cereal.
That's my kinda doctor. Okay, move on now, here, board of trustees report, just a very few items. Mr. Frankie? Joey, still over there?
Yep, got it.
They can't see you. Joey, yep, still there.
Can we back down a couple of those boxes?
No, 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 they stay like that.
I'm actually hoping we can do this in our executive session, stack them up front of the mayor and then...
That would be a bad idea. Okay, back in September 26th, I need to meet with the new owners of the Super Eight Motel on Tui. We're actually looking to do some work, modifying, modernizing, updating it. So, we're glad to see that, and I know we'll be talking to them further in the near future. Also, we finalize the same day where everything's going for their tree lighting. The exact place we're gonna put the stage and where Santa's coming and everything, so we're excited about that. It's hard to believe that's only three months away.
Wow.
And where the weather's going, it feels like Christmas, doesn't it?
Yeah.
No?
Two months.
Two months.
Three months.
Barely.
Christmas.
Tree lighting?
Tree lighting is two months, but Christmas is three months away.
Christmas, yeah.
I wanna give you enough time, make sure everyone buys the right gifts and...
Less than three months.
Big bowls for cereal.
Less than three months.
October 25th?
To September 25th.
They can't hear me?
Right there.
They've heard nothing I've said all night.
Oh, what a blessing.
Should we go back and start over?
How do we do that to this whole room?
You've never repeated yourself before, why start now?
Okay. Whoa. Put a little more boxes, a little higher around that area down there.
He's on a sugar high.
Okay, I haven't eaten yet, I'm gonna eat when everyone else talks. Okay, couple of quick last items. We are gonna do a drone, drone show for the Roti Fest concert. Last year, we tried it for the first time, because the way the band stopped and all that, the, still kinda light out, so we're gonna move the concert to eight o'clock instead of seven thirty. It won't get done till, at the earliest, nine thirty, maybe a little later. So, afterwards, we'll do a drone show around nine forty-five. So, we're gonna try drone show for a second time coming up this year. If anyone's gone by the big prime development at the corner of Oakton and Bussy, the one, people write about looking like a prison, people don't realize they gotta wait till it's done, but that's fine. Tonight, on the consent agenda, is redoing the property at the corner there. We're gonna put an entryway feature into the village at that corner. It's gonna be a waterway entryway feature. It's gonna be a nice entrance to the village, and we think that's important because that's a main now entryway into Elk Grove off Oakton, off of Bussy Road coming from our prospect. So, we wanna have a great way welcoming Elk Grove when people come in. Also, anybody talking about looking, anyone gets a chance to go by Bussy Road and Landmire, right across from the Holiday End. Stern Pinball, remember they located all the headquarters and everything there? They just installed their giant pinball and all the decorative backdrops and everything at the corner there, especially at nighttime when it's lit up. If you get a chance, go by, take a picture by the big pinball, take a look at the beautiful murals inside the place, it really looks nice. And I wanna thank Dave Stern, right? I'm trying to think.
Gary.
Gary Stern. Gary Stern. I wanna thank Gary Stern and everyone there for working with us to do the beautification and the improvements at that location. So, that's done. Also, we talked to Richard at the senior housing, that's gonna be coming in behind Topopa there on Arantax Road. We put together a new name for it, we're not ready to announce yet, gonna bounce off them, make sure they're fine with it. But they told us that they're looking in November to bring the plan to the plant commission. So, that should be moving along now. The hope is, by next summer, they'll get all the financing in place, they've applied for it from the state. Hope they have by next June, and if that's the case, we go through all the other process, hopefully by next summer they can start construction. That's our goal. So, we're excited about getting affordable senior rental housing, and it should be moving along very soon. Also, a bit of sad news today, one of our fire lieutenants suddenly passed away recently. We have Mark Pilowitz, who is a lieutenant here, he was a fireman twenty-two years in Elk Grove. Again, he passed away suddenly. Our prayers go to his wife and boys, he's got three young boys and...
And a daughter.
And a daughter. No, three boys. That was the sister. That was her sister there. So, three young boys, all went to Elk Grove High School. I know Trustee Bush was a teacher of at least one of them, right?
Right now, yes.
Right now, he's a teacher of the youngest, youngest one, I think. So, our prayers and our condolences go out to the family, and please keep them in your prayers when you go to Mass on Sunday, be appreciated. Last but not least, see how fast, Mr. Frankie?
It's not over till it's over.
Okay. Halloween's coming up, just two weeks from, or three weeks from Thursday. Again, we're gonna be putting out the green and red signs in the newsletter coming out. Green, if you want people to trick or treat your house, red, if you want them to pass by this year, is what it's gonna look like. We've used now the past few years, it's done great, the green trick or treat, the red, pass by. Trust me, makes my time go much faster. Yes, it'll be my sixty-fourth year of trick or treating. I will be out, thank God for grandkids, so I don't look that bad. And remember the new hours we started last year, we're gonna do this year again, from three to eight PM. Remember, we started at one for a while for the younger ones, we found out three PM is early enough, so three to eight PM, so people that come home from work still have time to go out. Green sign, they come by, red sign, they'll pass by. And trust me, as a trick or treater, you cover a lot more houses than you'd always time ringing the doorbell and no one answers. So, we like the green and red. So, that's coming up shortly, we're looking forward to it. Hopefully not snow like last year. Actually, we've had snow...
I think it was the only time it snowed last year.
Huh?
It was probably one of the only times it snowed last year.
And we've actually had snow on Halloween two of the last five years. So, hopefully not this year, looking forward to it, should be a good time. So, Trustee Frankie, that's it.
Wow, that's good.
You know why? I'm on a sugar high. All this cereal stuff keeps you going.
Let's leave some boxes for next meeting.
We'll go trustees before, Trustee Jerash?
Good evening. I attended on September 28th, the Kenneth Young Center Remember, Recover, and Discover Event, and it was an event to remember and highlight Kenneth Young Center and their efforts to help individuals with recovery from addiction. I also attended last week Acme Industrial Manufacturing Day here in Elk Grove. This company produces machine parts for large mining equipment and transportation systems such as high-speed locomotives, the CTA trains, and then large mining equipment. It was really awesome to see an actual tool and die shop that's huge. Probably one of the most interesting things is that this company works together with local high schools, District 214 was there, and as part of the internship program, they are always looking for student interns to develop and mentor into machinists of the future, which is very important for us in America to continuing the trades and to continue making things in America. I also went to the Sheila Ray Open House, fantastic, to see what's available for those who are seniors, and you only have to be fifty-five or older to join and be a part of that. Lots of exciting things going on there. And lastly, I attended an interfaith council meeting last week, and two things that I wanna highlight from that, our pads site, which is our community pad site, which is hosted at Christus Victor Lutheran Church, started up this past Sunday, and they are still, there are still opportunities to volunteer for that. They're looking for people to provide meals for November, and if you are interested, go to their website, cvlutheran.org, and then, once you're on their website, you go to the ministry page and go to pads, and you can sign up real easily to provide a meal, or even sign up as a volunteer. Second, and my last thing tonight, is to talk about a community-wide Thanksgiving prayer service, which is going to be hosted by Our Lady of the Blessed Sacrament, their St. Julian location, and that is community-wide by any parishes who want to come and participate. It's Monday, November 25th at six PM, and that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Trustee Schmidt?
Yes, I'm happy to announce that we are going to be involved with our Sister Cities starting actually tomorrow. And I'll talk about Friday first. Friday, we're gonna have eleven, sorry, twelve students from our Sister City come here to do a student exchange with students at Elk Grove High School. So, they will be at the high school next week, and we have, and they will be here through the twenty-first of October, and we have a bunch of activities. They will be participating in the Columbus Day Parade in downtown Chicago next Monday. In addition to our students, we are gonna have seven doctors coming from our Sister City, and they're gonna be doing a medical exchange with doctors from Election Brothers Medical Center. So, there'll be, some of them are arriving tomorrow, and then some of them are gonna be arriving later in the week. And also, our friend Luigi Condiotto, who we all know, he's, he runs, helps run the Sister City program in our Sister City of Termini Marise, he and a small delegation are also coming, some of them are arriving tomorrow, and we, one of the things that we're gonna discuss is 2025, because in 2025, we will have been Sister Cities for twenty-five years with Termini Marise. So, we're gonna take a look at some fun activities for both Termini Marise and Elk Grove Village for 2025. So, we're looking forward to all our Italian friends coming here, and we're gonna have a lot of fun over the next week and a half, and that concludes my report.
I think Tuesday at three thirty.
Tuesday at three thirty, they're all coming here, the doctors and the students are gonna meet with you, and then do a tour of the police and fire department.
Got some nice gifts for everyone too, so they'll be happy.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes my report.
Okay, Trustee Prochnow?
Yes, I am also involved with the Sister City Committee, and it will be part of the tour when they come to Village Hall. It's an exciting time for those students coming from Italy, and our exchange students, our students here will be going to Italy over spring break, so it's just a wonderful experience for both sides and for all of us involved that are volunteering. On Saturday, September 28th, Trustee Jerash, myself, and our social worker, Tila, did attend the forum at the Kenneth Young Center, and Trustee Jerash did a presentation, which I unfortunately missed because she was supposed to be farther down in the program, and when I got there, she was done, but I'm sure it was a very good presentation, and it was a wonderful program. And then, on Friday, October 4th, Trustee Jerash, myself, and village staff attended that manufacturing expo at Acme Manufacturing, and Kathy gave you a little insight into some of the things that they manufacture there, but we're looking at wheel rims that are so big and so heavy, and the extent of the things, they work with coal mining, they work with trains, they work, and I think Kathy, I don't think you mentioned it, but they actually make parts for the Patriot missile.
Great, great.
And so, that was very exciting, and they did, the high schoolers were there, they were also part of the tour, it was about a forty-five minute walking tour. And then, at the end, we were given a plaque, the village was giving a plaque that says, Acme Industries Manufacturing Day 2024. Thank you for attending the Village of Elk Grove, Mayor Craig Johnson and representatives. So, I present that to you in their behalf.
If it shows up on our six...
Kind of hard. Yeah, it was manufactured right there on site.
Yes, and one more interesting thing, Kathy talked about the internship programs, and they're very big on that, and there was actually a young man working there on Friday, that started from Elk Grove High School and as an intern, was very interested in the programming, and when he, when he graduated, the company hired him, and they're hiring him at, what did he say, starting salary was? Thirty to forty dollars an hour? These are students coming out of high school, not having college debt, working a full-time job, and making possibly forty thousand dollars an hour, and room to grow.
Forty dollars an hour.
Forty dollars an hour, I'm sorry.
I'm over there.
Yeah, sorry, sorry, sorry.
It's a big company.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's a huge company, and we're very proud to have them be part of our community. And then, on Saturday, October 5th, the farmer's market had their annual pet parade. Twenty-five costume dogs participated, and everyone got a trophy. Next week will be the last farmer's market for the summer, and it will be our children's Halloween parade. Registration starts at ten thirty, and the parade is at eleven, so I look forward, come dress up your children or your grandchildren, and come on down, and let's have a fun parade. Everybody gets a trophy, and lots and lots of candy. Also, last but not least, I attended the annual fire department open house this past Saturday, October 5th, was from twelve till three, was a beautiful day, great turnout, and I'm sure everyone that participated had a very good time and learned a lot about what our fire department does. There is one additional thing, just a reminder, I ran into a neighbor today when I was out walking, and she was very concerned, and I know the board has had some discussion too, about these scooters that are running around the village, and she was also concerned about bicycle safety. This time of year, when I'm driving home at five o'clock and I'm driving down Wellington, there's just that one spot of sun that comes down and is almost blinding, and you can't see anything, please be very, very cautious. A good friend of mine was hit on his bicycle a couple of weeks ago on Elk Grove Boulevard. No, no, no problem on his part, he was just driving down the street, and a car made a U-turn and was blinded by the sun and didn't see him, and threw him several feet, and you have broken ribs and cracked discs and things like that. So, please, please, when the sun is out, anytime, be very, very cautious and look around and see what you, you know, what's on the street with you besides vehicles. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. And you're talking about the internship, back during the Great Recession, 2008, 2009, is when we really stepped up with the high school, because the biggest problem we had was we had companies saying, we can't stay here because we have no employees.
Right.
And we got jobs, but no one to fill them. And like you said, the pay these people get, they get six-figure jobs by the time they're early twenties, they got six-figure income coming in.
And the guaranteed job for life.
Oh, yeah. And so, we got a great partnership with the high school, great partnership with Harper College, and the... and the village and the businesses participating. Matter of fact, on Monday, Columbus Day, we're going to be at Elk Grove High School, cutting the ribbon for the new culinary school area that we partnered with the high school. We put up $750,000 to make it happen. So, you know, we put our money where our mouth is and it's a win-win. Helps the students, helps the community, helps the businesses, so.
It's such a breath of fresh air, because for so many years, when our kids were younger, all the school district was pushing was college entry, ACT scores, ACT scores. And now they finally have recognized that it's not, college is not for everyone.
Nope. A lot of kids want to do work with their hands, doing that kind of stuff. When we were kids at school, Jeff, you remember, and Chris, you had printers, you had tool and die making, they taught you that.
Car shop, they buy a bad shop, yeah.
Automotive. So now they're coming up with today's needs, which is more high-tech. You know, computer-generated manufacturing and work like that. So it makes a lot of sense, so.
And this mining equipment or parts that they were making. So a lot of the raw ingredients are mined in India or in South America and all the, and then it's shipped to the States. The parts are made here, Caterpillar, and then the machine is shipped back there. So, I mean, we in America need to keep making things.
And we are, and that's what, got to do more of it. Thank you. Trustee Jeffrey, now notice the mayor's report compared to some other ones, I did pretty good, didn't I?
I'm going to beat you really good.
Okay, trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
No report.
It was close though.
No, do you guys think it was close?
Trustee Miller.
Thank you. I only have one thing that I want to bring up. People always ask, "How can I get involved in the village?" And there are many ways that they can. But one way is through the Community Character Coalition, otherwise known as the CCC. And one of the things that the CCC does on a monthly basis is they collect items for packages for patriots, which is a wonderful organization that actually sends boxes of items and goods to patriots overseas. They do that on a monthly basis, they pack on the third Tuesday of every month. So next Tuesday, October 15th, the CCC members will be helping packages for patriots to pack those boxes. And it takes about 45 minutes of your time to do that. It's through the Lutheran Church of the Holy Spirit. And it's such a wonderful opportunity to get involved. So if you have an opportunity to give your time to something that's worthwhile and very rewarding, that would be one. And that concludes my report.
And people forget, we still have people serving.
Absolutely.
Oh, in Afghanistan and the Middle East and all that area, so.
They send about 35 boxes out every month to different places and it's amazing, yeah.
So, last but not least, the gentleman behind the boxes.
Hi everyone. You know, speaking on this idea of service, obviously thank the mayor and Mr. Knickerbocker for contributing to the cereal campaign. You know, when we started this 10 or 11 years ago, or whatever it was, you know, they were serving about 200 families per month. And now we're doing about $1,500 fam, 1,500 families per month at the township. So cereal is definitely a need. We used to have enough that would fill a year. Now it's, you know, filling maybe three or four months of need. And so I want to thank the students that are getting involved, that are raising money, that are collecting cereal. And it's just an excellent opportunity for the community to continue to give back and serve those in need.
And we'll have a box.
Yeah, we'll have a box.
It's there right now.
It's there right now, created this morning in my laboratory shop of school. Paid, unpaid labor, but service hours credited to the students. And it'll be there until October 25th. And then we'll make runs and, you know, put this in boxes and then bring it over to the township for the count. And then it all concludes at the Elk Grove at Rolling Meadows football game on the 25th. So if you want to go to that football game and bring a box of cereal, the township truck will be there as well. And it's just a great thing we've been doing for the last several years and really helps out.
And we don't want to lose.
And we don't want to lose, no, no. We lost the first year and haven't lost since. So the trophy is at Elk Grove High School in the trophy case and hopefully we can continue there. It's a really nice trophy, it's a big bowl, and not as big as the mayor's bowl, but it's a good, it's a good-sized bowl. And we hope to bring it back. And that concludes my report.
Okay, now to put all rumors to rest on all this, the reason my bowl is like this, we were one bowl short. And I did not want to leave anyone short a bowl, especially Kobe, who is enjoying it. So actually, Brian Mizak with the Public Works said he had one downstairs in the shop. So he brought it up to me. So that's how the true story happened. So, but I'm not complaining about it being bigger. Okay, move on now to the accounts payable one, we'll first do September 30th, 2024.
I move that we approve the accounts payable warrant for September 30th, 2024 in the amount of $8,329,511.27.
Second. We have motion by trustee Prochnow, second by trustee Bush, Lori, call the roll please.
Trustee Jerish.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Prochnow.
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt.
Aye.
Trustee Frankie.
Aye.
Trustee Bush.
Aye.
Motion passes six to nothing. Move on now, accounts payable one of October 8th, 2024.
I move that we approve the accounts payable warrant for October 8th, 2024 in the amount of $320,046.86.
Second.
We have motion by trustee Prochnow, second by trustee Jerish. And without objection, recorded votes, please demonstrate it, six to nothing. Consider the agenda tonight, we have items, A is in Allegheny, through G is we're hoping good luck to Florida with the upcoming storm coming up, right Mr. Knickerbocker?
Yes.
Our prayers going out to those folks, probably get double whammies, so, see what happens. So, A through G, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So moved. Notice it deep, just stern. No kidding. Authoritative. Authoritative voice. Yes, it was, I did work. Authoritative.
There's a lot of syllables for you.
Author, terror, tiff, six, that's a record for my brain.
Are you all right?
No, it hurts. I'm going to need to take a piece of cereal to hold me. A six syllable, I don't think we've ever had.
Wait, authoritative.
No, a terian.
Oh, a terian.
Authoritarian.
Authoritarian. And, yes, six. I have used two hands.
I think I.
Yeah, he's right.
Somebody seconded, did we vote on this?
I seconded.
Yeah, trustee Frankie made the motion, trustee Miller seconded it. And without objection, record the authoritarian vote, six to nothing. Six syllables, six to nothing, six syllables? Oh my God, so lucky he's, lucky he's not three sixes.
No, no, we don't go there.
Okay, move on now, Mr. Roan, there's no, is there a plan commission, Mr. Roan?
We have one item under plan commission. On September 30th, the plan commission met to hear PC doc at 24-4 to consider the petition for a special use to operate a healthcare facility in the I-1 zoning district on property located at 511 Bussy Road. It was the consensus of the plan commission by an ADO vote to approve the petition for special use.
Is a petition here tonight? Okay, sir, you should be fine. Any questions or concerns? If not, I need a motion, direct the attorney, prepare necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by trustee Miller, second by trustee Schmidt, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that directs show of unanimous approval. Okay, sir, you're all set. Next board meeting to be mere formality, you do not need to return. It was passed unanimously by the plan commission tonight by the board, so you're all set to go. We want to first thank you for working with the village, working with the commission. Everything done, we thank you for being part of Elk Grove and looking to continue and reinvest back in Elk Grove. So we thank you for your time tonight, sorry it took a little bit to get to you, but we appreciate you being here. Okay, if it wasn't for the township, I'd give you a box of cereal, but I got to help those people first. Thanks again. Okay, anything else, Mr. Roan? The zoning board?
No items.
Okay, we move on to the recycling and waste committee of trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
Thank you, I just want to remind everybody, we start the leaf pickups. Check your newsletters on what days we will be buying to pick it up. Put stuff in the street the night before, but do not block the gutters or the curbs in case we do get some rain, which we haven't. But not a lot of leaves on the ground yet, but starting.
Have you picked any up?
Yeah, locusts, a lot of locusts.
Yeah, those old banana things?
Well, and the little locusts, the yellow ones, the first one.
Oh, yeah, the real little leaves.
You pick up locusts, you become cicadas too. Just curious.
You guys might be going until December this year, the way the weeks are looking.
Well, we usually do one after Thanksgiving.
Usually a pickup, hopefully we won't have to.
We'll see. It's definitely a late year. The drought did not, and we're still in a drought. I mean, it's not going to rain for weeks more, so I'm not sure, leaves aren't changing, I'm not sure what's going to happen this year.
They won't fall.
Yeah.
Anyways, that's that, so check your newsletter for your day, if you don't know, you should know. But the other thing I want to bring up, and it's kind of early, but it will be in the new newsletter, is I know people are going to start pulling their old, their Christmas lights out pretty soon. If the weather's nice, they're going to want to put the stuff up. Any of the bad strings you have and all that, don't throw them in the garbage. We collect them, as of November 1st, right out in front of the community service area. Up until April 30th, we'll take the old strings. Alls you have to do is dump them in, we've got a few dumpsters up in front. And they recycle it, so don't throw it in the trash, it can be reused. So if you're going through your stuff and starting to dig out your Christmas lights, they're not working, which there's always going to be a string or two that don't, or more. Just bring them by here in the village hall and as of April, I'm sorry, November 1st. And we will get them recycled for you, so, good luck. That's all I have.
That's it?
All I have.
Thank you. Judiciary and planning and zoning committee, trustee Prochnow.
No report.
And capital foods committee, trustee Schmidt.
No report.
Sheets are stuck together. Cable television committee, trustee Jerish.
So I just want to remind you, Channel 6 is out there filming athletic events at the high school. And you can catch up on games and it's a fun way to connect with our high school. Also, when I had my report before, I forgot to mention something, so this isn't Channel 6 related. But I wanted to point out, in our police department, we have two licensed clinical professional counselors. And one of them, Kristen Ebbie, received her certified domestic violence professional certificate last week. And so Tila, our other counselor, is certified in alcohol and drug counseling. So it really sets our department apart, because we now have these two counselors who are certified. And not many police departments in the area have that. They provide an extreme resource to our police as well as our community. So I just wanted to congratulate Kristen and wish her well. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Jerish. Youth committee, trustee Bush.
No report. But I did want to add something. I saw someone today and they commented to me and said, "I heard you're the smartest person that the mayor knows, because you mentioned that the last board meeting." So while that's probably not true, there are people watching these board meetings, so that's good news.
And the take when I say for gospel.
Yeah, that's good.
And I got to say.
I might get an honorary doctorate soon.
I'm just saying, I was serious when I said that, you're one of the smartest people I've met. I'm impressed with your, not only knowledge, but your vast area of knowledge. Mr. Knickerbocker has a very narrow scope of knowledge. So narrow that you have to use only a micro, microscopic, but it's there somewhere, we will find it. But you do have a narrow, but I'm impressed, so I'm glad for the pickup. Okay, always coming back to you, George.
It always does.
Information committee, trustee Miller.
Goodness, sitting between you guys, it's really something, I don't know who to, to.
Who's got a bigger head?
Yeah.
You know what I miss over here is Chief Dorn.
What?
I haven't seen him.
Oh, there he is, there he is.
He could have snuck out.
He probably wishes he did.
Yeah, no kidding.
Go ahead, trustee.
Okay, so just a quick reminder, for those people that want to still enter their house for Halloween decorating contest, you have till next week, October 16th, to send your entry into lionbarbara@comcast.net. So there are different categories that you can enter your home with. And the lions will be judging those, those different entries. Another thing, the prescription drug take-back day is Saturday, October 26th, from 10:00 to 2:00. So if you have an old prescription that is not finished, but you are no longer taking it, this is a great time to drop that off. There's also a drop-off box in the police library, so our lobby. So if you don't use it that day, if you don't take the drug back on Saturday, October 26th, you can still drop it off in the box of the lobby. And October is National Crime Prevention Month. So many people have a routine at night to prevent any crime at night. They turn on their lights, they make sure their garage is closed, they lock their doors, they lock their cars if they don't have the cars in a garage. So please have some kind of routine to make our Crime Prevention Month a positive one. And trustee Jerish, thank you for talking about Kristen, because October is Domestic Violence Prevention Month. And we do have a dedicated social services team that offers such valuable support. Both Tila and Kristen are there to help with this. So remember, if you have an issue that you need some help or some support, call the village for Domestic Violence Prevention Month. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Move on now to business leaders forum, trustee Schmidt.
No report.
Health and Community Services, trustee Prochnow.
Just a brief reminder that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So please, ladies, all of you out there, it's very, very, very important that you get your mammographies and remind the rest of the ladies and your family and your friends to get them done too. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Personnel committee, trustee Schmidt.
No report.
Just a quick update, talking about airports, that storm now is 165 miles an hour out there. It's going to be a bad one. Noah, report on airport, Maggie, anything we're hearing or? Now, I talked to a fellow mayor that's on the ONCC, he said they haven't even started the study analysis yet, so that's what they're hearing too. So, we'll see what happens. Okay, parade committee, we talked about a little bit, we wrapped up last board meeting, talked a little about it. We have our last meeting on Monday, the 14th. And get ready for next year's parade, looking forward to another good one like we had this year. And yet we're still trying to figure out why the eagle had only one wing, so working on that. Midsummer concert classic series, do you got the lineup, Mr. Knickerbocker?
I don't think so, do you?
No, I don't either. I was just checking. We're working on it, we're hoping to have maybe something done by November meeting, so we'll see what happens. Special events, our next event is a tree line we talked about, the Friday after Thanksgiving. And the band will be?
The loving.
Spoonful, very good, very, very, boy, I'm impressed. Yeah, little slivers, just so, just not much. Okay, Noah, report on liquor commission, Mr. Matthew Roan, any report from village manager?
No report.
Okay, village clerk, Lori, I know you got a report.
Just want to remind everybody, early voting will be here at village hall, October 21st through November 4th. I know that the news are, they're saying that early voting has already started, so many people are calling in. Ours doesn't start until October 21st. We will have mail ballot drop boxes if you have a mail ballot. You cannot bring them to the front counters, you have to either bring them to the post office or deposit them in the mail ballot drop box during early voting. Because this week they started coming into the village hall with them, wanting to drop them off. And we're not authorized to accept them. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, and again, thank you, and general hard work, make sure we have early voting here at Elk Grove. It is greatly appreciated. And it does save a lot of time on election day. Mr. Knickerbocker, nothing under you?
I don't think so.
Yeah, I've never seen anything up. Any new business ideas from any trustees tonight? And Kobe, my bowl's almost empty, yours empty?
You have four empty bowls.
He finished off four? He did? Jared said you did. Jared never, not tell, Jared's out, no? Mr. Knickerbocker, how's yours doing? A little bit? Thank you.
I think Joe chewed in the bottom part of the box.
There was a hole in the box, there was a hole in the bowl I started chewing.
Ah, Joe finished it, see?
It's a corral, they never break, don't approve. I'm not going to do that.
Take care of Mrs. Johnson, I don't. But she did go out and buy you nice special spoons.
Thank you.
Okay, any public comment tonight? Helen, I see you guys two weeks from today. Mrs. Seino been talking to you about the lunch and everything? Okay, good.
One more thing. Just a reminder, I went out today and I got my COVID and my flu shot, this is the month.
I got mine today also.
Get it done.
When we were dropping off the box of cereal, she was sitting there and I said, "One in each arm."
I did them both together.
Nothing, I don't feel good.
Get it, get it done, please.
We don't require our people to get shots, but we don't.
Do it for yourself and do it for your loved ones.
My doctor recommended, so.
The nurse that gave me the shot, I asked her, if you don't get the shot, are you a carrier? And she said yes, that's all I needed to know.
But again, it's people's own choices.
Correct.
So they choose what they think is best, and, did you get yours?
I'm gonna go Friday, I missed it today.
Thursday.
I thought it was. Friday, is it Friday?
Public Works?
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, oh, Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, yeah.
I think it's Friday.
Public Works.
Friday here again, okay.
Yeah, I was in court.
Very good.
But Helen, senior Olympics? No, taking the year off? All right, we're coming, no, we, Elk Grove High School seniors go to the Sheila Ray Adult Center and we have a little competition.
Do you really?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
The high school kids go get the seniors?
No, you pair two senior citizens with two seniors in high school for, not a team of four.
Really, do they do wrestling?
Uh, that's for the final round. After the wee bowling doesn't settle things, we take it to the mat.
Very good, thank you, so we're all set for me to come, I think ten fifteen on the twenty-second? I look forward to it. You have usually a pretty good crowd. I think.
You will.
I had Donald Trump count my last number, he said we like eight hundred million people, right? So, he counts very good, he's a good counter, yeah. So, but no, I look forward to it and a lot of stuff going on in the village to talk about and I know they look forward to it, so.
Will somebody come there and actually tell them the truth then later?
Don't push it. Anything else? Yes, Nancy, you wanna come down? Yeah.
Don't forget the next, the lunch from last community forum.
Yeah, talk to Helen. We're good.
They got it.
Okay, thank you for coming, just came to watch tonight, Nancy? Okay, she wanted a preview for next.
She heard free cereal.
She wants, no, she heard a preview for next, for the seniors, she wanted to hear the preview, so, we're good. Okay, anything else? Kobe, I still got some left, if you. Okay, with that said, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We got trustee Frankie, now we have a rest match.
To see who?
Oh, he asked you, you already won.
Oh, I did?
Yes, he said, now you, trustee Miller seconds it, Lori, can you call the roll please?
Trustee Schmidt.
Aye.
Trustee Bush.
Aye.
Trustee Frankie.
Aye.
Trustee Jerisch.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Prochnow.
Aye.
Folks, enjoy this unbelieving, nice October meeting, adjourned.
Out of Cranford, New Jersey, our local municipal channel, TV thirty-five, is a major source of hyper-local information that is specifically designed and created for our residents alone. We get to see our town meetings, concerts, high school sports, news and more on a channel that is strictly about our community. The value of public, educational and government stations was clearly demonstrated during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. All-access channels provided crucial information, including press conferences and emergency updates from their municipal governments directly to their citizens. Today, the very existence of peg channels is under attack. Access channels have been historically supported by a special surcharge that subscribers pay on their monthly cable bill, which is passed back to each municipality. But in twenty nineteen, this all changed, the FCC passed a franchise fee order that allows the cable companies to redefine the way peg stations are funded. Under this new order, the cable companies could add the value of in-kind contributions to this cap, including the ability to place an arbitrary number on the value of each access channel. This would greatly affect the total amount received.